It is 5:31 on Monday, September 19th, and I'd like to call this work session to order. I'd like to bring my fellow counselors' attention to our fancy new agendas, so we can all start getting used to those. Very nice. Thank you Clerk's Office for organizing them. Our first agenda item are city updates, so Ms. Solano, please take it away.
Good evening, Madam Chair and City Council members. On the mayor's end in attendance this evening, I have several city updates. First of all, the COVID update. The one-week cumulative positivity case count for this past week was 145.4 and the one-week positivity rate of 5.9 with a continuing eight days of stabilized hospitalizations at Parkview. The information about a mobile vaccination and testing a bus is now out on the website and also on social media. So that information, they've rescheduled for the all the sites in September and will go forward with a mobile vaccination now that the variant vaccinations are available. I'll bring that next week so we can show it on the screen as well where the different sites are while we're on recording in the video. I have an ARPA update this evening, and the mayor's recommending an additional ARPA project for a city council's consideration. The proposal is from the Pueblo Arts Alliance and Creative Art Corridor in the amount of 36,000. Karen Fogel-Song will be presenting this evening right after the updates, so I'll leave the rest to Karen, so I don't who's coming in the door, so I don't steal her thunder. Also, the list of businesses that qualify for the ARPA Census Track Small Business Grant Program, it'll go out to all of you electronically tomorrow. I was looking at it again today and the intent, President Graham was, I believe, not to have a stockbroker or investment counselor in that list of businesses. So it was one more look that I think we could take and we'll send that out to all of you electronically. As well as tomorrow, the staff is going to present to the mayor the process. When I spoke last week, a couple of weeks ago now with the City Council Budget Committee, we had to develop what does the letter offer look like? What does a grant agreement look like and how will we manage the process of it? So I think we have that in place and ready to bring that back to all of you for consideration of funding in an upcoming meeting. I have an update, not really an update, but the Fall Team Up to Clean Up event is still in process. They're still looking for that South Knights North Side dumping site. And I'm talking with the Pueblo Mall Administration, still scheduled for November the 12th. Not able yet for me to say that there's an October date. We're getting close in the window for October, but he just stopped by right now. The Director of Public Works and Andrew said I don't have another update from Pueblo Mall for a date sooner than November the 12th just yet. Last week, City Council had a discussion of the option of scheduling two back-to-back 2023 budget work sessions in an evening where we could devote some time and they wouldn't be so spread out. And looking at a calendar, it was last week and earlier today, I had to match calendars with this venue and came up with the following options. Have to wait until after August, October the 11th. That is the day that the mayor submits his recommendations on the city council agenda formally to City Council. So Wednesday and Thursday, October the 12th and 13th, right after that Tuesday, City Council meeting would work with a meeting beginning at 5:30. Our problem is that we'd have to go offsite as a liquor board and marijuana board meeting are scheduled in here already that Wednesday and Thursday. And we would also need to notice the meetings and then figure out the recording. We likely need some technology so we could look at and discuss as well. We also have an option then of the following week, which is be Wednesday and Thursday, October the 19th and 20th. And then we can go ahead and meet in the chambers without any conflict of scheduling. I wanted to change the work session schedule but wanted to wait till after your direction this evening. And if those two weeks don't work out, we can go into the last week of October on a Wednesday and Thursday. But any direction from you is what I will take and modify that work session agenda. And if you, if I need to send out an email and get a collective reply, I can wait and do that, or if you know this evening, I'll write to your direction down and make it happen.
Thank you, Ms. Solano, for those updates.
I have additional updates. I was just stopping for that one. You want me to keep going?
Does council have a preference on the 12th or 13th or 19th or 20th?
I'm good with either one of those weeks. This is enough time to note.
Counselor Graham says the 19th and 20th. Does that work for everyone else? Okay, I think let's move forward on. Counselor Warner?
You know, I guess I would just go with the majority. I think it's better to have it in hand.
Okay, so then let's move forward for October 19th and 20th. Ms. Solano, can you also then, if that is the case, can you revise the budget work session that orange highlighted ones?
Absolutely.
Great, thanks.
And moving on with additional updates, the mayor was in contact. He asked me to share with you this evening. He was in contact with the president from Everest, North America today. The president will be visiting in Pueblo in early October and agreed to a, to present a work session to City Council. Mr. Skip Harold, we're going to try to schedule for October the 3rd. That will be like a jam-packed work session agenda, but to take advantage of a request and also to get everything we need to do in with a budget initial work session information. We'll schedule all of that on Monday night, October the 3rd. And then just the last update is a reminder that the pickleball opening and ribbon cutting is scheduled tomorrow in Mineral Palace Park at the New Court at 10:00 a.m. with an exhibition game scheduled at 10:30 between Stephen Meyer, the Director of Parks and Rec, and the mayor. That does conclude then the city's updates, and if you have any directions or questions of me.
Great, thanks, Ms. Solano. What questions are there from council? Counselor Graham?
Ms. Solano, as we had talked last week, I'd rather see that cleanup happen in October, and so I'm fine with just one, one location if the state fair is still willing to handle. I don't think we should be moving all the way into November for cleanup.
Thank you. I think the director is here this evening, so we'll work, we'll move forward with that to identify a date in October.
Can you, what's the date in October? Or there's no?
No scheduled date yet, as there's only one site available, and that is the Colorado State Fair.
Okay. Other questions or comments for Ms. Solano? Great, seeing none. I look forward to the back-to-back work sessions, October 19th and 20th, for the budget work session. Moving right along on ARPA, can I have Ms. Fogel-Song to the podium, please, to present about the Pueblo Arts Alliance ARPA request? And Ms. Fogel-Song, whenever you're ready.
I have some things.
Yeah. Bring it on. Thank you. Do you want us to pass it out? Take one, pass one. Really quickly, Counselor Warner says, is anyone on the Confero platform right now? And no.
No, let me talk to IT to see if we can.
Counselor Warner, I'm going to forward you the link that I received, and maybe that will open up in an email.
Whenever you're ready, Karen. Okay. Hi, thank you, City Council, for having me here and for all the hard work that has gone into procuring these funds and is still going into distributing these funds in Pueblo. This is a lot of work, and I just want to let you know that we appreciate you doing this. The Pueblo Arts Alliance has experienced the same sort of issues that you all might have been hearing from other nonprofits or other arts organizations that have been drastically affected by the COVID-19 shutdowns. Our programming and fundraising is basically focused on activities of interaction with the public. So of course, we were drastically curtailed. We were very lucky in that in 2019, we were, this is prior to my joining the organization, but we were building a little tiny nest egg. We had a little bit in the bank, right? And that money helped us to get through COVID without having events and programming happening on a regular basis. So we were also able to help our tenants get through. We did things like offered no late fees if you could pay your rent, or we let people out of their leases without penalty if it was necessary. And late fees, penalties, and rescinding leases, sorry. And then our Impact Youth Program created the Belly Box Program that some of you might be familiar with, or the Blessing Box Program that's happening around Pueblo. And we kept those boxes full around our establishment for that, for the duration of the COVID shutdown. And we were also making sandwiches and care packages. We were even doing dog food and toothpaste and things like that that we were distributing. Yes, it is not part of the creative programming, but we had people that needed to survive at that point, so that's what we were focusing on. We fed several hundred people every week, and we made the care packages and even took them to the bus station. We shifted to online programming and had activities up and running in a live production twice a week for the first part of the shutdown. These were creative workshops that people could do at home to help deal with stir-craziness, right? We signed up for and qualified for the Five Star Program. And when we were allowed and we were not in strict quarantine, we, we did produce events, even opening the Liminal Space Gallery, which has become a community gallery, and the Creative Reuse of Pueblo, which we refer to as Crop, which is a thrift store for creative supplies to bring lower-cost supplies to the creatives in Pueblo and also to help reduce landfill waste. At this point, we are completely without a nest egg of any size, and we're basically living from program to program. So our studios are filled again. We do have paying customers in all of our studios except for the largest one, which I commandeered for the Liminal Space Gallery, the community gallery. And we do feel like currently that we are kind of having solid ground under our feet. We are starting to build again rather than just survival. So we're trying various avenues to keep ourselves afloat in the future and to keep Pueblo creatives relevant. One of the things that we do is participate with the Creative Corridor Program that is directed by the state of Colorado. This puts us in line with a lot of tourist publicity that nobody in Pueblo actually has to do because we maintain this relationship with the state and file the reports. We send, for example, they're currently creating a map of the state with all of the corridors registered on it. And we'll be a part of this map that'll go out around the country and any kind of tourist attraction publicity that they do. Let's see. We send the First Friday Explorers Guide all around the state to welcome centers that we would not have access to without this relationship with the state. So far, we've sent close to 7,000 brochures out to these welcome centers and to various places around town and any place, basically, I'm constantly looking for someplace that'll take our brochures constantly, right? So these things are not things that Puebloans see on a regular basis. So sometimes it seems like the Arts Alliance may not be doing a lot because we're doing these state functions. And, and obviously, Puebloans don't see them for the most part. This year, we even got the mayor to participate by giving us a little soundbite that went into a little video we created that was hosted on a state social media site. And we are in the process of creating television and radio commercials with Mark D. Herrera and Gina Percival to promote the Corridor and the Arts Alliance. As a nonprofit, we'll be able to send these commercials out to the radio stations and TV stations to be a part of the PSA queue, right? So hopefully, free publicity for Pueblo downtown. Kind of free. So I was asked during the process of the ARPA exploration to document how many youth that we have served in the past year. And I think you have that document in front of you. It says youth served by Pueblo Arts Alliance 2021 to 2022. And it starts with the Chili and Free Hella Festival. Do y'all have that? Okay, so I don't want to just read that document to you. I think you can see that. And if you have any questions about details of any of those programs when we get to the question part, that would be wonderful. And if you'll look at the, also, the events page that I brought you. Let's see, it looks like this, has little posters on the front of it. These are some of the events that we've done over the past year. Not all of them are moneymakers. For instance, the De Los Muertos Ofrendas are, we didn't make any money off of that, but I feel like things like this are very important to our community to create community, right, to bring people together and, and to work together. Also, several artists were paid with grant funds to create the pieces for our particular ofrenda. And then something like the Empty Bowls is right next to that. We also did not make money off of that. We donated the space for the bowls to be created, and we donated some of the supplies. But again, this is important for our community. It's an annual event that helps raise funds for some of our food kitchens. And then some of the other pieces, you can see that we're partnering with other groups in our community, the SCEA for Pride Prom, CSU for the Raised by Wolves Show. This is a fundraiser for a specific scholarship at CSU for working mothers. And currently, we have the Urban Sketchers of Pueblo in the gallery. We've also done things like set up gallery-type situations at the Pueblo Airport, at the Judicial Center, at Headline Salon. These are ways that the artists can be seen, and we're also promoting Pueblo and the creativity that is here. This year, for our You'll Love It Downtown program, we have gotten NEA funds, and we hope to bring Santa back downtown. We think there, hopefully, there won't be any restrictions to being around Santa this year. We also just found out today that it's possible that we'll have a giant snowman and an elf going right downtown. Thanks to these NEA funds, we'll also be able to pay entertainers. For instance, Pueblo Folklorico will be performing in the corridor and several other artists. So we're able to help create attraction to downtown for sales and sales tax generation, but we're also helping to support the artists with working wages. Let's see, and I want to remind you here that the three portions of the Creative Corridor, Main Street, Mesa Junction, and Union Avenue vie with Dillon Drive for the top two, the top position of sales tax generation in Pueblo, right? So we go back and forth on those two. So it's an important part to keep people coming into our downtown. This year, also as part of the You'll Love It Downtown program, we're going to be partnering with the Latino Chamber and Pueblo Folklorico to celebrate our Latinx heritage by bringing the Latinx Holiday Gallery Show to life and combining it with the events that these two organizations are already doing at the time. So we're really excited for that, and we hope it's going to become an annual event. So on our budget, we, we originally asked for $40,000. I have been told that we are, like, kind of quasi-approved, temporarily approved for the 36,000 pending your promotion. And so I've adjusted the budget just a little bit. And I was also asked if we could make a focus of setting aside some of the funds for youth programming here in Pueblo. So I'm looking at the $5,000 for the web calendar, which would bring, hopefully, bring people together to find creative events at one place. $5,000 for mapping our public art in Pueblo, and this would help us to advertise it and also to get it to the state because they have a public art map. $7,000 for new corridor flags, which we've had in the past. And this would just designate the area, and it looks bright and welcoming. And, and then the 7,000 that I asked for paying performers in the downtown area, we have the NEA grant that will pay for that, so that portion we will roll over into contracting with Aces School of Creative Expression to create participatory programs all around the corridor for youth. So I think I'm out of time. So if you have any other questions for me, please let me know. The programs that I gave you all are examples of the Explorers Guide. Some of the, the Creative Corridor pin is something that we received grant funds, grant funding for, and the Gravel Adventure Guide is something that we're really proud of because we got the galleries, all of the galleries in Pueblo to work together, or actually, not all in Pueblo, all the ones in the Creative Corridor. We're still going for all of them, but we got them to work together to do this one ad, and this program will, this guide will be out for about three years. So anyway, thank you. I can keep talking about this forever, so I'm just going to stop and let you guys hit me with questions.
Thank you, Ms. Fogel-Song, for all of that information. What questions are there from council? Counselor Martinez Ortega?
I don't have a question, but I was just gonna, I'm sorry, I was just gonna instruct the mayor's office to put this on our desk so we can vote on it. I'm in favor of this 36,000.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Counselor Flores?
Yeah, just a question about the artwork on the levy system. Is the Art Alliance involved in that at all?
Yes, sir. Myself, I serve on the Levy Committee, and the Arts Alliance donates the space for the Levy Committee to, the mural committee to meet on a regular basis. And we have also been a part of several fundraising events with them.
And where are you with that? I noticed that there's some murals that have already been put up, but there's still a lot of space. How long is it going to take before you infill the entire levy system?
We think several years, actually. So if I understand correctly, there are certain places on the levy that are still curing, and so some of them will come available as time goes on. We opened the historic section this year, and that was curing last year. But now we're dealing with people debating over what exactly historic is. So we work with the Conservancy District for that definition, and I don't think it's going to be an easy process, but we're still working it out. I don't, I don't have a date when it's going to be full. What we're aiming for is the United States World, the United States Record for Longest Mural and the World Record for Longest Mural. The United States record, we're getting close to. The world record, we have a long distance to go, but I think it is, I don't, I don't want to lie. I don't, I don't remember where it's at. But the place that it is, they are about to run out of space, so we still have miles to go. And so we'll eventually get the world record back. But we're not looking at a fill date.
I don't know whether people realize that the Art Alliance building houses a lot of tenants that provide a lot of good stuff. My grandson, for example, takes piano lessons there from the lady that leases some space there. But I noticed that right before his lesson, there must be, I don't know, 50 people that are walking out just having taken yoga.
Yes.
Yoga's a big thing, but could you elaborate? What are the other tenants in there? I mean, there's a lot of stuff that the citizens could access if they knew they were in there.
Absolutely, and that's something that we're working on. I think our tenants got into the habit of being closed and are close to the public, and so, except for studios that have specific classes, like the yoga studio, that's Studio Share, Kirsten Clevin and, oh, Jill's last name just ran out of my head, and Rebecca Clock all work together to teach piano and voice lessons. Avalon Wiggins with Colorado Percussive Arts teaches orchestra and classical music. But you're prepared for a professional life in music once you work with his studio. We have Why Not Studios, which is a puppet theater. Mostly, you don't see much from them in Pueblo, but they are selling on a national level. They send costuming and puppetry out all over, all over the country. And let's see, we have Aw Clay, which does clay. I know that sounds silly, I'm sorry, but sometimes. We also have a kind of a new age store that's recently open that does new age specifically geared art. And then we, if, for the ladies, well, I guess for anybody nowadays, you can take pole dancing or belly dancing with one of the studios. And Gina Percival is working on like a company called Mud Pie that does creative journaling and artistic expression, hiking, going on nature hikes and that kind of thing. And then there is, I'm sorry, I didn't bring this list with me. I'm trying to list off the top of my head. But there's, there are a lot of amazing people, and many of you probably are related to or know the people that are working there. Barrett Skull does, mostly, you're not going to see his work in Pueblo either, but he does concert posters for bands in bigger cities, mostly. And we have a couple of artists that do canvases, like either acrylic or oil or watercolor, that kind of thing.
Thank you for explaining that, because sometimes we have little gems in the community and we don't even know about it.
I absolutely think the Arts Alliance is one of those gems. Thank you.
Ms. Solano?
With respect to an additional mural, Counselor Martinez brought to the mayor an opportunity for a city mural. And I just received an update that, let's see, the Director of Parks and Rec and Counsel Martinez met with Cynthia Ramu and our Director of Public Affairs just last week. And I think the mayor gave the direction of the theme of Under the Five Flags of Pueblo and to send it out then in partnership for a creative piece that I think all of the, will be open up to many artists, and all of their recommendations will be brought, I think, your plan to City Council so that hopefully you can select the top five or six. And then Counselor Martinez's idea was to place those then on a website and ask the general public to vote from there to finalize the selection that will then be painted as a mural on the levy.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Process.
I think it's going to be really cool. We should get like 36 different drawings, and then we can choose the top five and then have the public vote on it.
Please let me know. I'd be happy to push that out on our social media for you to get that posted. And you guys have one mural there for the bike race right now, right? You know that the first annual bike race poster contest was translated to a mural on the levy also.
Other questions for Ms. Fogel-Song? Seeing none, thank you so much for your time.
If y'all change your mind, please get in touch. I'll be happy to answer any further questions. Thank you for your time.
Moving right along, the next thing on our agenda is a HARP update. So can I have Ms. Clark and Mr. Anderson to the podium, please?
Good evening. I think we have a PowerPoint.
Yep.
It's up? Okay, it's over there. Okay. So some of you know me, some of you don't. I've been around a while at HARP. I'm Lynn Clark. I'm the Executive Director. I've been at the Rock since 2010. And with me tonight is David Anderson. He is our current Board Chair of the HARP Authority. He serves on the He serves on the HARP Foundation. And if you wanna go way back into history, he was one of the original HARP Commission board members. So he has a lot of history with us as well. So thanks for giving us this opportunity tonight. And we're just going to kinda give you a little HARP update, some things that we've been doing. It's been a while since we've seen anyone. So I really appreciate this opportunity to see all of you face to face tonight. So with that, I'll let Mr. Anderson start.
We have gone from parking lots to the jewel of downtown, the HARP Riverwalk. In 93, the commission was formed to go ahead and build the HARP and get fundraising drive going. In 95, then the foundation was put together to raise funds for the building of the HARP. In 97, the HARP Authority was formed with the IGA, which shows the foundation to raise funds. And then the authority, which is to promote, manage and oversee the workings of the Riverwalk. The IGA is made of the city, Pueblo County, Conservancy District, Urban Renewal and Pueblo Board of Waterworks. We have a staff of five and then seasonal workers to do the boatwork during the summer months. Our heart purpose, just to be real short, we do events and activities, tourist destination, and then the sales tax generator, which has been amazing. Lynn will give you some of that down the road. Riverwalk Security, we will be getting new cameras, or actually, we're gonna start with new cameras on the Riverwalk, the end of the year, the first year. And thanks to city council for helping us out with about $60,000 to do that. That's gonna help us tremendously for the protection and the, and security of everybody down there and the buildings. Capital maintenance, our whole theme is sunny side up. And then we do the boat operations, activities and the expansion development, which is the 1A project.
So moving on to a little bit more about operations and maintenance at HARP. We went out to proposal.
We went out to proposal for security this past year. We had increased pressure from different types of behavior down at the Riverwalk that were negative for business, negative for visitors. DC Private Investigative Security, Dan Corsantino's company is the one that was selected. We've been working with them for several months and things are going well. But overall, security is costing more money between minimum wage going up and just services in general with inflation. So we saw an increase from $90,000 for a year contract to 98. But I suspect with Dan's company, we're gonna need more hours. So we could probably see this kind of blossom up to $120,000 a year. So that's, that's a lot more than we've spent in the past. But when you look at a typical day at the Riverwalk, we have a lot of visitors from out of town. We have a lot of families from our own community. And then we do have some misbehaviors down there that are not conducive to the type of project we built. So security is definitely a priority. Safety is a priority in all of our community. But when it starts to affect the businesses down there, there was time for us to, you know, make a change, choose a different security company, as well as put together the security camera program. What we were seeing is a lot of property damage late evening. And you know, there's mischief, but then there's also destruction. Broken windows at Angelo's, several other businesses. The Ecoop building and the doctor's office had broken windows and they had a fire. So the, the security cameras will actually give us the opportunity to pinpoint the trouble and hopefully identify some suspects. This type of program is, the software is very sophisticated. So the police department and our security company will be able to review footage and identify areas of issue and, you know, problems and hopefully leading to an arrest of some of the property damage. So, so that's security. And the next, the next big thing at HARP is really the visual appeal, right? We want it to be safe and we want it to look nice. We built this place so people would come to our community. We built this place for our families and our friends. And no one wants to come to a place that's in disrepair. So for the past 13 years, we have put together our best efforts to do capital maintenance and repair. We really didn't have sufficient funding until 2017 to do much. The previous maintenance budget for the Riverwalk annually was $25,000. And when your venue hits 20 years old, which it did in 2020, you know, you start to see the cracks. So that's when, you know, the Riverwalk Board and myself, we put together a 10-year plan. And the things that you see coming up since 2017 are those things that need to be addressed, primarily for the safety of our visitors and the visual appearance. It's a big list. You know, things, things like this are not simple to fix. It's a very complicated process to bid it out. But we do always select someone for best price. We try to do business locally, so there is work, you know, available to the local construction companies when we bid these out. So, so that's our list for this year. From time to time, we have emergency repairs down there. They're not covered by insurance. And we have to make some choices. We'll look at the current list and see if something can wait here. And then we make the proper repairs, like if we have an emergency. So these were the capital projects that we've done in the past two years. The Red Pedestrian Bridge is that really pretty scenic, you know, looking bridge over the river. It, it was really deteriorated. We had some engineers come out and look at it. And it took us two years to put away enough money to actually do the project. It came to somewhere between $95,000 to $100,000 in repairs. And the way our budget works is every year we get, you know, a little bit of money to do repairs. So we actually had to hold some money over from 2020 and 2021 to get that project done. So I thank you for your patience. I think that with our capital repairs, we try to do exactly what we're saying we're gonna do. There are some projects that we cannot complete in one year due to our funding. Veterans Bridge railing was repainted. We did the parking lot at Angelo's. Lake Elizabeth needed enhanced lightings. We've had some issues up there with nighttime behavior, so the lighting will help. The tree pit grates needed to be leveled. There were quite a few tripping hazards out on our public sidewalks in some of our plazas. And we did have some accidents out there, so we required to fix them. And then the coping and pavers around the Riverwalk, which are also some tripping hazards. So these are just some quick pictures. And I don't know if you got to see this before the meeting, but there's, there's a significant difference when we look at what's got to be repaired and then we fix it. You kind of, you get, you get the idea. It has to look good if we're gonna keep people down here. We also had the boats repainted. The boats are 20 years old. A local company did that project for us. They knocked the dents out, they repainted them. They're looking really nice. And you know, if you come for a boat ride, you want the boat to be clean and shiny and well taken care of. So that's what we did.
Then the, the other part of the Riverwalk is the recreational entertainment, the REO. So with the boat operations, we do paddles and then paddle boats. And one of the things which I'm really happy with, because the Board of Waterworks or the Pueblo Association of Realtors were involved in this of, we did it with Columbia Elementary. We brought 100 students here to do boat rides and then have pizza at Angelo's, which was a big deal. Pony Elementary, there were 50. Fountain International Magnet School, 50. Irving Elementary, 50. Morton Elementary, 50. PSAS, 50. And Menacaw School, 100. And they came twice. So we had like 450 kids down on the Riverwalk. It was amazing when we did this the first time about three years ago. Their expressions, when we brought them down there and they got on the boat, they were really excited cuz a lot of them have never been to the Riverwalk or been on a boat. And of course, they loved the pizza. It's not what they normally get. And that was a very big plus for us. And then we did it again this spring. Let's see, seasonal boats, May through October, and then the weekends in December, paddleboard kayak. And then we do the events, the fundraising. The sponsorship revenue, this is also a big deal for us. Boat operations, CSU Pueblo, AMR has a boat facilities. Pueblo Toyota, Grand Staircase, Pueblo Dodge, Gateway Plaza, AMR, the Confluence Plaza. Annually, Don Landscaping does thousands of dollars of in-kind for us and have for years. Sid Mean sits the doggy stations, which is really helpful cuz we get a lot of dogs down there. And then Wagner Rents does a lot of in-kind also. Entertainment areas, Pueblo Toyota Floodwall Stage, Pueblo Dodge Gateway Plaza. Fourth of July, we had about 8,000 people down there for the fireworks. It was all free and a lot of families. That's the one thing we have noticed, a lot of families. Riverfest was the same way that we did a couple of weeks ago, which was a huge event. The BMX bikes, the skateboarding, and then the crazy guys with the wakeboard and what they were doing was amazing. And then, of course, we'll do the holiday lighting in December. Next month is Halloween. And as you can see in the picture, we got, it's all families that come down. And different businesses are giving out Halloween candy for that, which is huge. And then, of course, the holiday lighting that we do the day after Thanksgiving, which is lots of fun and really good.
Alrighty, so we did send our budget request. So thank you for taking a look out of it, at it. I wanted to just briefly show you what the request was. Oh, here I go again. I'll get it right, so, so the budget request. I wanted you to take a look at how we put our budget together from the revenue side. You know, these are all the partners in the IGA. So what we do is we put together all the expenses that we anticipate annually. And we do include revenue from our sponsorship in our, in our budget. So that does help out what we ask for the, from the partner. So when we look at the expenses, basically the city of Pueblo pays 50%. The Pueblo County Commissioners offer up 40%. And then the rest is made up by the Pueblo Conservancy District, the Urban Renewal Authority and Pueblo Water. Pueblo Water doesn't contribute just to the basic, like general fund of our operating budget. What they do specifically is provide money for water quality. So when we are having trouble in the channel with the weeds and the algae and the clarity, we've hired a company called Solitude Lake. And the Pueblo Water Board will fund us directly for all of those expenses now. So that, that really helped us quite a bit. So CAM fees are also part of the revenue before we, you know, divide up what we're asking our partners for, the patio leases and the parking. So we do try to squeeze the pennies out of the world before we come to you and ask for what we need. What's happening next?
And then next is the couple of things. We have the, the two land, two lots on, on the Confluence. We would like to get with the city and Urban Renewal to work on a plan of actually marketing those more than what we can do and see if we can come up a way to sell, actually sell both of those lots and get some more. We get CAM fees on footage. And there's a lot of footage that we are not getting money for. So it'd be great to get some buildings there and bring in some more businesses with that. So we'd like to get those two organizations together so that we can add some more buildings to our property.
I think we should probably mention, like the square footage goes into the CAM fee figure that I was showing you. And the other point I wanted to make tonight, and I think Karen did a great job talking about the Arts Alliance, is that we asked the sales tax department to do a geographical report just on the Riverwalk footprint. Cuz we really couldn't tell where we sat with the downtown sales tax and some other areas. But from 2017 to 2021 or 2022, we've actually doubled our sales tax revenue. We went from $192,000 on the Riverwalk to $360,000, $370,000. So those little businesses down there in that tiny footprint, they're chugging along pretty good.
And then our next big project is the HARP expansion from the 1A project. We are just waiting to get the okay from the county commissioners when they, hey, sell the bonds so that we can go ahead and build the boathouse, extend the channel up to Santa Fe. And then we've got a nice grassy area that'll also be done besides all the landscaping that we'll be doing to it. It's a big project, $13 million. Thanks to the city, they have already chipped in a million, which is the purchase of the Ferguson lot and will be used for, for parking. And then we have the 11 million from the 1A project. And then the HARP Foundation is raising a million. And they have $363,000 already raised, so we're one-third, a little over one-third there. So we are making lots of progress. The boathouse is the next, our next big project.
So this, some of you may have seen the boathouse before. So this is the, the finished product. We have our building plans ready. The, the city has graciously offered to assist us in bidding it out. The HARP Authority will actually be, do, do the bidding. But with the support of city staff, we can bid it out properly. The advantage to this is the HARP Authority's purchasing policies are slightly different where we can negotiate with contractors. We don't have to keep putting it back out to bid. And I think that will help because we have a finite amount of money to build this and we're going to stay in budget. So this is the, the front of the boathouse that faces the channel. So the behind to the left is where PBR is in the convention center. The first floor of the building will house our boats and a ticketing and concession office. The second floor has conference or conference rooms facing the channel, which we would make available to groups coming into the city, whether you have visitors from city council or PEDCO or the county has someone coming in. If you wanna put your best foot forward, we would make these rooms available for visitors. We have a big enough kitchen in place where if you needed to do a breakfast or lunch meeting there, you could. So that's the other side of the building and faces more towards where I-25 is. There's three garage bays there for equipment and storage of things that make HARP beautiful and make us, you know, work. It's a very, very functional building. There's a rooftop deck that's pretty exciting. About 150 people can hold a party up here together. We do charge CAM fees to the businesses on the property. So those CAM-paying restaurants would have first opportunity to be the caterers of the events here. If they would pass on it, then we think that the process would be that the next set of businesses here in Pueblo, in the city or in the county that do catering, serving of food and drink would be offered, you know, the ability to do business in that space. And of course, city council or has important visitors that come to town or the mayor, who will make that space available to you as well. So we do have an entertainment area planned behind the boathouse. It, it's a parking lot, but it also has quite a bit of electrical built into it. So we can pull in one of those really nice stages and do a nice concert venue where it is level. So it's ADA accessible. We'd, we'd have restrooms available. We'd have plenty of flat space for visitors to set up chairs and come and see all kinds of musical acts or, you know, theatrical type things. And I think Dave just kind of mentioned, you know, where the funding is coming from here. So the county through that 1A project is providing 11 million. And the HARP Foundation is writing grants and doing fundraisers for the balance. It's a great project. The plan for future maintenance and upkeep of this building, as you can see, we have a pretty good sponsorship program. There's opportunities in this building to bring in enough sponsorship to pay the utilities and the maintenance and the upkeep because we'll have to put together a 10-year plan for a building like this too. We will, we know in year one, we probably won't see them. But in year 10, we're gonna have building issues and we're gonna have to take care of them financially. So, so that is.
And the Board of Realtors have already committed $60,000 for the, the top of it, for the AV that they need. And actually, I think we've collected 20, no, you know, 20, 30,000 of that already. So.
Yeah, we've had a lot of generous people in town contribute, so.
So any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Clark and Mr. Anderson, for all of that information. What questions are there from council? Councillor Flores.
Yeah, the, the question of the extension of the Riverwalk all the way to Santa Fe, is that dependent on moving the Transit Center?
No.
So that could be.
We're working around it.
We can go around it.
Yes, yes.
Great, that's great. I, I was happy about, one of my questions was going to be whether or not we were gonna have an amphitheater to do some small entertainment after we lost, you know, the, the covering that we had.
Right, right.
Blown away. And it looks
Blown away, and it looks like it's now serving another purpose. So I'm really happy that you've got a, you know, a new venue. And it makes a lot of sense to make it ADA.
In the building, the roof was redesigned so that there is an area up on the third level that looks down where that grassy area is.
But as far as the state, you said something about putting a stage. Where, where would that?
So let me go to the channel picture. So in the center, you see where future parking is at the top. So you see a triangle of grass in that parking area, parking lot. That is where we would pull in a truck stage, and then all of Gateway Park and the plaza is where people could be. There's plenty of seating in the grass, and as I said, it's level, it's ADA accessible. So anyone that wants to, you know, produce a concert down there, it would be very simple. We have a lot of contacts for the staging and the lighting. There's all kinds of stages that could be brought in. It would be very simple.
And then, uh, once the boathouse is finished, you guys will move into there on the second level. The space where you're at now, the metal building that you're in, that'll come down and that'd be available for something else.
Sure, and, and the history on that is that, that lot's actually owned by Urban Renewal. The HARP Foundation has a land lease for twenty years, but the agreement states that if they ever had a development prospect, that we would move out. We'd find a new home, a new office space, and we'd move out. So, you know, it, it would be up to the HARP Foundation and Urban Renewal to kind of negotiate, like, is it time to take that building down? And then, you know, if it's for the best, you know, of the city and, you know, all the partners, then that's what they would do.
Other questions or comments for HARP Authority?
Councilor Graham?
I just wanted to say that the trick-or-treating on the Riverwalk is really cool. I was down there last year handing out candy, and there was so many kids and families down there, you couldn't walk. It was person to person and.
So you couldn't get any candy?
No, they, they took all of my candy. And, um, but it was, it's a safe environment. You know, there, a lot of people I had, you know, I was campaigning, so I was stopping and talking to a lot of people. And they were, you know, saying with COVID and everything that had been going on the previous Halloween. It was really nice that you guys allowed that to go on down there because that was the first time that they had been able to bring their kids out. And that there was just such a good turnout from the businesses and other people like me that were down there handing out candy. That they were like really thankful that the city or Riverwalk, you know, allows that to go on and put something on. So I just wanted to.
I think we focused on free events. Yeah, I think you remember we used to do a lot of paid admission events. And as the businesses developed on the Riverwalk, we got feedback from them that we were blocking the traffic to their door. So we really thought about this. It's like, you know, can we raise some sponsorship money, get rid of the barricades and just let people come? And then biz, let business do business. We, we weren't there to get in the way of the business. We were trying to do events back in the day when there was no business. Now we have businesses and we take care of them. So we're very pro-business and very conscious of that with the authority board.
Any other questions or comments for HARP Authority? Saying none, thank you so much, Ms. Parker.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We look forward to the boathouse. Last on our agenda is the Humane Society, the Pike's Peak Region Pueblo Campus update, and there's a whole slew of presenters. So please come to the podium. And Ms. McGuire and Mr. Adams, whenever you're ready. Also, a huge congratulations to Lindsay, who was recently promoted. Hey, congrats.
Oh, council members, thank you so much for giving us a little bit of your time today, and we promise we'll try to go fairly quickly. It's, um, what we want to do is take a little bit of time and talk to you about what's going on in animal sheltering across the country. We're going to narrow down into Pueblo, but we're going to start out with talking a little bit about national. And one of the reasons we wanted to do this is there is a lot of information circulating on the national level. And you're, you're seeing things pop up in your news feed about shelters that are, that are really struggling and more animals coming in than ever before. And some communities are in fact really struggling. And when all of this started happening, COVID has thrown a really interesting change in what's happening with animal sheltering across the country. You know, there was a reduction in the number of animals coming in when, when everything started happening. And everybody started wanting an animal, which is a great thing, but shelters didn't have them because they weren't coming in. And everything anymore seems to be kind of taking a turn where people are talking about, well, we're seeing more animals than ever before. So what we thought we'd do is just kind of walk you through a little bit about, and I'm going to start out. We're talking about some national trends, and this data is provided to us by Shelter Animals Count. Shelter Animals Count is a national database of shelters from across the country. There are, I don't even want to guess how many shelters, but most shelters and rescues participate in Shelter Animals Count. So they submit their data, and even if it's only fifty percent of a particular community, it's a consistent number. So we can really look and get some idea about some of the trends that have happened. We asked them if they could look at their data for the first quarter. Because twenty twenty-two, first six months is when everything really started to be, we started to see that shelters were struggling. And what was going on with, you know, shelters are saying, we're seeing more animals than we've ever seen before. So what you see here is on the left side is the national trend. On the right side, we did the mountain region. So United States is divided up into five regions. Our mountain region stretches everywhere from Idaho, Wyoming, all the way down through Arizona, New Mexico. So it's a, it's a big grouping, and we do find that the trends in the mountain region often are a little bit different than the national trends. Particularly when you start getting into some of the, the southwest areas. But what we saw, and, and when we look at animals coming into a shelter there, we're going to focus today on cats and dogs. There are certainly other types of animals. I mean, if you've been to the shelter, you've seen that we have ferrets and hamsters and guinea pigs. Anybody want guinea pigs? Guinea pigs? No, lots of guinea pigs. What we find, when, when animals come into a shelter, they come in one of three ways. Either their owner surrendered, they're a stray, or they're transferred in. So transfers and rescues are always working our networks to try to find the best possible outcome for animals. So this, this slide here is looking at the total number of animals that came in nationally versus mountain region. And I'm going to focus over here on the mountain region. You can see that if we look at, in that little box is right over top of the number that you're going to want to see there, it's a five point one percent minus underneath that box. I can't, but. So if we look at, and again, this is all organizations that are reporting in in the mountain region. We saw from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two that there is an increase of five percent of animals coming into the, the organizations. However, when you compare that back to twenty nineteen, pre-COVID, it's actually less. Now, this was information that was very disturbing and hard to hear for some of my shelter partners from around the mountain region. Because they all feel like we're seeing numbers like we never saw before. You're seeing numbers like you didn't see last year. But going back, we did see higher numbers. When we look at specifically what I'll call community animals, which is a combination of owner surrenders and strays. Transfers are decisions that we made to bring animals into our shelter. Community animals are those owner surrenders and strays. And if you look over there again, you'll see overall eight point five percent up since last year in the mountain region. Still three point nine percent down from what we saw in twenty nineteen. This varies dramatically from what the national trend is. If you look over at the national trend, you see that nationally, there are fourteen point nine percent fewer animals. And again, that doesn't mean it doesn't feel like you aren't seeing a lot more animals than you've seen before. But statistics, I've been told, don't lie. True, Dan? They don't? Okay. Looking at now we got the other thing going in the way, so I'm going to, I'm going to switch over here. This is, this slide is adoptions. That's what's underneath the bar down below there, so you can't see that. But, um, thank you. Looking at the number of animals adopted, you're seeing that we, here in the mountain region, we've seen an eighteen point eight percent increase in adoptions versus nationally is six point six percent. And particularly since twenty nineteen, we're up five percent. Now, again, you can only adopt out animals if you're taking in more animals, right? And it takes animals to be able to adopt them out. So that's a little snapshot of what's going on nationally. My clicker quit working. Sorry, technical difficulties. Uh, now I want to focus in, bring it down to Colorado, and we're just going to talk about Colorado for a second. This information is provided by PACFA. We have PACFA here in Colorado. We're very fortunate to have the Pet Animal Care Facilities Act. And that allows us to really, unlike any other state, we know how many organizations we have serving animals. We know how many animals they've taken in, and we can really start to look at some of that data. This data is going to go back, I'm going to go back a few years here. We're going to look at just dog intakes for Colorado. And you can see that, that an owner relinquished dogs since twenty seventeen, the number has been fairly consistent, sitting about seventeen thousand. Stray dog intake dropped off tremendously during twenty twenty COVID in the beginning of that and has come up a little bit. But it's, it's still less than what we've seen in previous years. So our community intakes, again, up from twenty twenty, but yet down from previous years. Uh, transfers in, we have the third way that animals come in. I, I put those numbers on the bottom. I broke those up differently. Now with PACFA, there are about three hundred and eighty licensed PACFA facilities in Colorado last year in twenty twenty-one. Of those, about ninety of them are shelters, the rest are rescues. So there are far more rescues than there are shelters. And if you look at the bottom about transfer in, you can see what happened during twenty twenty in that rescues really amped up the transfers. There was a demand for animals. There was more opportunity to adopt them out. And transfers really brought in a lot more to our state, you know, to, to tune of about twenty-nine thousand versus shelters that reduced the number of animals coming in. We were struggling in different ways, mainly staffing and other things. So, and we did have a governor order for a while to not transfer in animals from out of state. So that had a tremendous impact in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. You see that shelters started transferring in a little bit more and rescues transferred in a little bit less. But I think the really important thing I wanted to show here is that last box there with all dog intakes. This is taking everything into account, all organizations. You still see that the number, overall number of dogs entering the sheltering system in Colorado is about ninety-one thousand. It is, it is set at about a hundred thousand since my dataset goes back to two thousand nine. And it has just been consistent, about a hundred thousand dogs entering the sheltering. That dropped to ninety-one thousand, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, still sits about the same. Cats, a little different story. These are owner relinquished cats coming into the shelters. You can see that they have crept up to the highest number we've seen in quite some time. Stray cats sitting about twenty-four thousand, total community cats at about forty-one thousand. So up significantly from twenty twenty, but not significantly from twenty nineteen. Transfers in, the rescues do not, rescues or shelters, neither one transfer in a lot of cats from out of state. But again, in twenty twenty, you saw that, that spike of rescues bringing in more. Overall, community intake of cats, it is up to sixty-seven thousand, which twenty twenty is only five thousand more. But it's also up more than we've seen before in quite some time. Cats had been on a downward trend, just like dogs for years, and now all of a sudden we're seeing an uptick. Uh, looking at the adoptions, these are dog on the left, cat on the right. Underneath, I broke that down to show the type of organizations that's performing these adoptions. A very interesting thing happened in twenty twenty in that rescues placed more dogs than shelters. That is the first time that has happened since rescues came on the scene. But in twenty twenty, there was obviously, with all those transfers in, there was more opportunity to adopt out, and they are still adopting out more animals than shelters, more dogs than shelters. Cats are primarily served by shelters. You can see there are some amazing cat rescues we have here in Colorado. But the vast majority of cat adoptions are happening through the sheltering system, and it's a considerable uptick in adoptions. Fortunately, people are, are coming out to adopt cats. I wanted to show you this slide, again, going back to the, remember back, three hundred and eighty licensed facilities in Colorado PACFA dataset. The cats by adoption on the left, the, the number one adoption agency in Colorado was Mayside Pike's Peak, Colorado Springs location. And then the Humane Society Pike's Peak. My, in there, we, we were first and ninth, so our, our, that bottom line there is the actual Pueblo Shelter. It's ninth in cat adoptions in Colorado. On dog adoptions, we are number two and number fourteen. So, and if you look between, between us, you're going to see a lot of organizations with rescue in their name. Big Bones Rescue, Soul Dog Rescue, Lifeline Puppy Res, Perpet Rescue. Again, that's showing that those, the rescues have really stepped up and are, are placing a lot of dogs into our state. This slide, we're going to start now transitioning to talking about Pueblo. In this slide, what we did is we took the, all the counties of Colorado, took their population base, and then looked at the PACFA data to say, not, of all the organizations that exist in that particular county, what was their intakes like? To do a comparison, to try to get an understanding of intakes per capita. So the number of animals coming in for one thousand people. This, this is when things started to get really interesting to us. The, the Pueblo Shelter here is, if you look at the, the bottom line that highlighted, that bold down there, that is the state average. So when you look at, O S means owner surrender. So owner surrender dogs per capita, the average is about, is two point three. Pueblo sits at three point three, not too far off. When you look at stray dogs per thousand people, we're at ten point three versus the state average of four point four. When you start to get over to cats, it really starts to focus in on the fact that we've got some work to do when it comes to cats. Seven point one cats versus the two point four, nine point seven. The overall number of animals coming in per thousand people here in Pueblo is thirty point four compared to El Paso County's, as an example, of fourteen point nine. So, and the majority of that is really the increase in the cats. And, and so love cats, they're wonderful, they're amazing critters, but we have a lot of them here in Pueblo, apparently. So, um, so we'll start looking at, at Pueblo trends here just a little bit, just to see what's happened in the four, past four years with owner relinquished dogs, up by six point two percent. Uh, stray dogs, down by two and a half percent. Doing well with, when it comes to stray dogs, uh, community, total community dogs, we are down by uh, point seven percent. When we look at cats, you see a little different picture. Uh, owner relinquished cats coming into the Pueblo Shelter. And now, this data I am focusing in on the Pueblo Shelter here. So a hundred and twelve percent increase in owner surrendered cats coming to the shelter. Uh, ten percent increase in stray cats coming in for a combination of community cats. Increase of thirty-seven percent increase in just four years. I went back to twenty eighteen data because that's the last full year of, of data I could get where the shelter was operating at full capacity. Twenty nineteen obviously had a different organization running it for a few months. And, and then when HSPR came back in, we did not operate it at full capacity for a few months. Uh, twenty twenty, it's a thing called COVID, which really threw a monkey wrench in everything. So I think it's fair to look at twenty eighteen compared to twenty twenty-one. Um, when we combine the cats and dogs together, everything together, community animals coming into the shelter, there's an increase of seventeen percent more animals coming to the shelter in twenty twenty-one than in twenty eighteen. Um, we talked before about the adoption and, and where, where we set, which is a good thing. When we start to look at the owner relinquished dogs coming in, you can see that we are, the shelter here is seventh in the state of three hundred and eighty licensed facilities. The Pueblo Shelter here is the seventh highest. When we look at cats, or stray dogs were the, the sixth. You guys want to see cats? When it comes to cats, the Pueblo Shelter here is the third highest intake of owner relinquished and the fourth highest intake of stray cats. All the shelters, so. Looking at placements, dog and cat placements here at the shelter. These are adoptions uh, for dogs and adoptions for cats. Underneath, I put in there the return to owner. Cause you only, we take in a stray animal, our number one goal is to get that animal back into its home where it belongs. I think I find it interesting that many people don't realize what happens with, so you see on the blue line, the number of stray dogs came in, the number of stray dogs that were returned to their owner. And then the percentage down below, sixty seven percent of stray dogs that come into the shelter are returned to their owner in twenty twenty one. In twenty twenty one, eight point five percent of the stray cats that came in. So fifteen hundred sixty four stray cats came in and a hundred and fifty three were reclaimed by their owner. That sounds really bad. But this is the return to owner rates for all of Colorado. You can see that um, sixty seven percent actually Pueblo is operating better than the average for the state on returning dogs. It is not operating as well as the rest of the state, but it's only thirteen percent, fourteen percent. So when you combine all of Colorado stray cats and all the ones that went back, fourteen percent of them are returned to owner. I did reach out to that, going back to that first slides, the shelter animals count, I reached out to that, that group and asked them if they would go through all the national data and find us the organizations that have the highest return to owner rate for cats. So we could reach out to them to find out what they're doing in those communities. And they did give us some and we are reaching out to them. Um, but the, uh, the highest one was twenty six percent return to owner rate for cats. So everyone is struggling with return to owners on cats. So that, um, that is kind of a quick, pretty little rundown to show you what's going on nationally, state and particularly here at, at the shelter in Pueblo. I'm now going to turn over Erin and she's going to take you through, because what I, everything I was just talking about was basically twenty twenty one data. So let's just hope that twenty twenty two is off to a better start. We'll turn over to Erin. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Duane. So year to date, we have seen eight hundred more animals compared to two thousand twenty one. So we're looking at the higher numbers in two thousand twenty one and we're a little bit more than halfway through the year and we're seeing a dramatic increase in intakes in both dogs and cats. So that's kind of the nutshell for the Pueblo campus and what this year has looked like for us. I did break this down. This is all through the statistics that we've been sending monthly. One difference here is that I did pull up, I pulled out cats that came into care specifically for the purpose of spaying and neutering and then releasing back into the community. That's under trap neuter return. And the reason I pulled that out is because we were able to trap neuter and return more cats in twenty twenty one than twenty twenty two. So it was skewing the data a little bit, showing uh, reduced intakes when it was part of our intake numbers, but that really is a public program that we provide. Um, I'd like to also take this opportunity to talk really quickly, just, just get a understanding of other or like sized organizations in Colorado and, and what resources that they utilize in order to um, achieve, you know, in order to care for the animals that come through their doors. So I'll start with Riverdale Animal Shelter. They, um, this is now going back to two thousand twenty one data, so we can look at a full year. So they took in six thousand two hundred and sixty three animals that year. Um, so almost a thousand animals less. Uh, one thing I would like to call out is that the Pueblo Campus budget does not include animal law enforcement because the three organizations that we're going to look at have specifically separated their animal law enforcement. It's either a separate agency um, or they've separated the numbers for us. So this is really just looking at animal sheltering and not animal law enforcement. So as you can see from Riverdale, um, they took in a thousand less animals than us. Um, and everything else is, is higher for them. So um, their annual budget to care for those animals, their staff and um, their facility in order to care for those animals. Uh, Foothills Animal Shelter is the next comparison. So they took in almost five hundred more animals than us in two thousand twenty one and they did that with a five billion dollar budget, seventy staff members and a sixty five thousand square foot facility. And finally, we'll look at the Humane Society of Boulder Valley. So they took in five thousand animals, um, almost fifteen hundred animals less than us. And they did that with a six million dollar budget, ninety five staff and a thirty one thousand square foot facility. So, um, at this point, we're going to transition from animal sheltering for Pueblo and look at animal law enforcement for Pueblo and I'll hand it over to Lindsay. Thank you.
Okay, we're almost done. I promise. We're uh, throwing an awful lot of numbers at you all. Um, but I just wanted to start out with um, maybe, uh, very similar to what Duane and Erin did. I actually took uh, two separate agencies that were uh, comparable for scope of service to like what we do here in animal law enforcement in Pueblo. Uh, so I compared us to uh, Larimer Humane and then also Jeffco or Jefferson County. And as you can see, when we talk about, just like Duane mentioned, intakes per capita, I wanted to see where Pueblo stood as far as the number of calls for service that we respond to on an annual basis. Uh, so just in line with how our intakes look, you can see that Pueblo um, is much higher uh, than the other two agencies uh, in that respect. Next, uh, what I thought was important to highlight is uh, not only comparing to where we stand within the state and other organizations, but internal as well. So as you know, we serve El Paso County, uh, the El Paso County Division as well, and it includes uh, City of Colorado Springs, Manitou Springs, Fountain Monument, um, and then of course, parts of El Paso County. The obvious population difference here in Pueblo. And these numbers that I put on here were really shocking uh, to me. So when you look at uh, specifically the aggressive animal calls with seven hundred ninety two year to date, that's so far here in twenty twenty two. And you can see where our El Paso County Division uh, stacks up. Injured animal calls are a little bit uh, even more concerning uh, because not only did we surpass the El Paso County Division's numbers, but we, as you know, have an even bigger challenge here because of the, the shortage of veterinary services. So a lot of those injured animal calls that are responded to after hours um, or in the middle of the night, a lot of those animals are having to be transported to Colorado Springs for after hours care. So as you can imagine, that, that places a pretty big burden um, on our agency. And then the last slide I have is uh, you all get to see our uh, statistics regularly on the types of calls we respond to, but what I pulled out was just the call types with the highest increase that we're seeing. Um, the, the dog at large and the deceased animal pickup had a slight increase, I think it's fifteen, sixteen percent. Um, with the most shocking increase was to the dangerous animal investigations. Um, and one, what I'd like to point out with that is not only is that a thirty four percent increase from last year, but the volume of responses that those calls require to resolve. And so we're talking about meeting with witnesses, victims, pet owners, uh, a lot of court sequences. I mean, there's a lot that goes into responding to one of those calls. And then of course, uh, as Duane mentioned, uh, the intakes of animals has gone up. And so naturally our response to impounding animals in the field has as well.
And I'm here to wrap things up. Julie Justman, Vice President of Operations for Humane Society of the Pike's Peak Region. It's been a while since I've been in front of you. Thank you for the opportunity. As an organization, uh, historically, we've done a lot of just responding to what's been happening to us in the communities that we serve. And we have been looking at our strategic plan and trying to look at ways that we can be more strategic in how we're handling the work that is, that we're responsible for. And uh, we know that cats are really a lot of work and they're also increasing um, faster than we know what to do with often. And we want to be more proactive about how we're handling that. And what are some things that we can be doing that could be helping ourselves and helping our staff and our volunteers and the community? So uh, earlier this year, we had uh, many staff that are what we call internal stakeholders in, in the arena of cats for HSPR in all of our service locations. Get together and we um, identified some priorities for us to work on strategically that uh, we feel have some area of opportunity. Um, one of those is educating the community and looking at how we could better communicate with them through all of the different mediums that we have. And possibly impact how they react when they see a stray cat, because not every stray cat necessarily needs to be impounded at a shelter. The cat may simply just go home and maybe thriving where it's at. So we're definitely looking at what are, what other organizations might be doing across the country regarding their, their communications. You know, if you see a stray cat, doesn't necessarily mean it needs to be rescued or taken to a shelter. So that's one area. Another area is reviewing the ordinances and statutes, that statutes that are in place for the areas that we serve. And are there, you know, what limitations um, and challenges are those statutes um, putting in place for us? And are there opportunities for us to make some, some changes that could help us manage cats? And also our shelter population management, what are the opportunities for increased efficiency and effectiveness? Like all employers across the country, we've been struggling with workforce um, challenges. And it, what it does force us to do is try and become as efficient as possible with the staff that we have. And always looking at opportunities where we can improve that and help make sure that we're serving the animals that we're responsible for the best way possible with the resources that we have. And another area that uh, we definitely see area for opportunity is through the Community Liaison Committee and they're all listed there. And we've got a great representation of the community, um, coming to these meetings and listening to statistics. And we're telling them about what's going on in the shelter and the community. But what we want to do moving forward is present them with a question and give them until the next meeting to consider from their own perspective, what they think about that question or what they think about that topic. And also ask their colleagues and their friends and their family, what they think about that question and bring us back that feedback. We want to cast a wider net to get more information from stakeholders throughout our community, citizens, government officials, uh, community workers, NGOs, all of them. We want to hear what they all think about these questions that we pose to them. So we're interested to hear what feedback they're bringing to us and, and where we can find some opportunity to improve animal welfare for the animals in Pueblo. And we made it. So, do you have any questions?
Great. Thank you so much, Humane Society of the Pike's Peak Region. What questions are there from Council? Counselor Warner?
How's it going? I haven't seen you forever.
We're both still here.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, let's see, I had a few questions. Um, is there anything you can put in cat food like hormones for stray cats that will sterilize them? Can you look at any kind of opportunities like that? No, seriously, that, I mean, you could do it. I think they do it for other wildlife.
Not, not that I'm aware of. I mean, I, I've heard of uh, inoculating animals against things like rabies with, with bait packs and things like that, but I've not heard of uh, food based um, any type of additives for sterilization. Um, that I don't know. I know that in wild horse herds, they've used some, some sort of um, remote injection type of situation, but not food. I've not heard of a food situation.
Well, darn it, that would be easy as a non-surgical way to sterilize animals.
It would.
Cause I think that's the biggest problem, especially with cats.
Yes.
They have like fifteen, fifteen babies.
Yeah, they, while their population will rise to the limit of the, the natural resources that are available to them. So when there's resources, then you're going to see the population rise.
Now, when, when um, I know that um, trap, spay and release, I know that program's been going on forever. Like it started in the thirties or something like that in Europe. And I think the original plan with that was to trap stray cats, spay and neuter and release and not to feed them and start these whole cat colonies. Cause stray cats really do go out there and eat bugs and rodents and that kind of thing. I don't know if there's any way to reverse that and go back to the original plan.
Well, it, I, I understand where you're coming from, but what we've seen in all of the jurisdictions that we serve is that people see cats, they feel bad for cats, they start feeding cats. And when uh, prior to the TNR ordinance that went into place, I believe in twenty eleven here, um, there was a ban of so, some sorts where if people were feeding them, then they were causing a nuisance or they were, you know, uh, also looked at as having too many animals on their property and it was a constant fight. We would set traps and it was basically trap and eradicate was how animal welfare handled cats back then. And um, it's just, it was, public sentiment was, was not great around trapping the cats and they would uh, tip the, tip the traps, steal the traps, damage the traps. And so even if we didn't do the colony program, they would be feeding cats anyway.
They would still, still be feeding, still hoarding.
Yeah. And then they wouldn't have, you know, even though our access is to spay and neuter is not where we would like it to be because of the lack of veterinary services. Uh, they would have nothing if there was not this program in place. And we do have quite a few colonies that are at the point now where they're over seventy five percent spay and neuter. And that means then the natural attrition will start to be higher than the birth rate. So that's where you want to see programs like this, where you, you have that at least seventy five percent um, spay neuter. But it, it takes time and it also takes a lot of resources.
A lot, and a lot of money. So. Yeah, money resources. Um, do you think that the rescue um, the rescue shelters for designer animals, uh, do you think, has, has that gone up because the shelters are participating in that with designer animals? I mean, are you sending designer dogs to rescue?
Um, the dogs that we seek rescue opportunity for are ones that we can't, um, we aren't able to provide enough resources to and weren't open, open admission and also open adoption, meaning we don't restrict who comes and adopts from us. So if you have an animal that's particularly uh, challenging and needs a very specific home or very specific rules set around its adoption, those are the animals that we would be seeking rescue for regardless of breed. So.
So you're not sending like uh, purebreds to, to rescues, you're adopting those.
It could happen if it's a challenging animal that we can't serve. Yeah.
Okay, but if it's a sweetheart, then.
No, if they're adoptable, then they.
I'm looking for a, a Boston Bull if you, if you get one.
They, they come in sometimes. There's also a really great Boston Terrier rescue in Colorado. So I, I could get you that information.
Okay, cause Bert would love to have a little sister.
I bet.
Um, and then let's see, I had some of the questions. Uh, da, 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 da. Oh, that um, sixty seven percent back to the owner. Wasn't that higher years ago? Wasn't that close to eighty percent?
Or six? No, I think sixty seven is, is the highest I've seen it. But it, it's hovered around that sixty percent range. I'm not seeing it higher than that, I don't believe.
Okay, well, that's, that's the highest rate it's been?
To my, to my recollection, yes.
Okay, that's, that's good. That's like, what, almost three out of ten? I mean, seven out of ten. Yeah, three out of ten. That's good, three out of ten. Um, let's see. Oh, uh, do you think that there's been more surrenders because of inflation? I mean, dog food has gone up about ten percent.
I think it's a, you know, do I have the specific reasons why? What it feels like is definitely some economic indicators that are, you know, people can't, there's housing problems, there's, you know, affordability. And um, also there's some people that suggest that when people are no longer working from home, they don't have as much time to spend with animals and maybe they would end up in the shelter then too. So I think it's a variety.
Oh, you're looking at people food that's, I mean, it's, uh, groceries are atrocious. I mean, a loaf of bread is a dollar fifty more. I mean, it's, it's astonishing when you're checking out at the grocery store. So I just wondered if that was another factor.
I, I definitely think that the economic impact is, is making, making it self-known in the animal world too.
Do you get a lot of surrenders? Sorry, guys, I have one more question. Do you get a lot of surrenders because um, the animals are elderly or they're diseased? I mean, to euthanize an animal on your own, that's well, I mean, that's two hundred bucks.
But we do offer humane euthanasia and.
Do some people just, um.
Some people come to us just for that service and uh, we do have fees based for that. However, if somebody cannot pay, we are still going to serve them. So we do, we do owner relinquished.
I just wondered if some people said this was a stray and it's a sick animal, just because they just can't afford it and.
Yes. Yeah, we do get some people that, you know, whether they feel like they're going to be shamed or they feel ashamed for bringing the animal to us, sometimes they do lie. We really work hard with our staff to make sure that that's, they're not presenting themselves in a way that would make a person feel badly for bringing an animal to us. We are here to be a safe landing place for animals.
Good. Okay, I think that's all I have, except the Boston Bull. Keep your eye out for them.
Will do.
Counselor Flores.
Thank you for that report. Uh, I know that we're coming close to reviewing our contract of the city and the county with HS, HSPR. And uh, do you know when our contract is up?
That this year is the last year of this current.
So it would be uh, January one or December thirty one.
We have been working on it.
And the mayor has has met with the county to try and everybody agrees they've done a great job. They're they're coming saying our costs have gone way up, way up. So it's it's now negotiating the total cost for next year and the contracts, I I think, have three year terms. And so that's where we're at.
Yeah, no one's a bigger fan than I am of HSPPR. I I think I'm more.
Thank you all.
But but I know where we're going from here, but I I wanted you to consider as you negotiate with the mayor's office of several things, okay? You know what happened in the debacle between the diff, the last city council? That that was four to three to to take the contract away from you. And during that period in which the other entity couldn't come, they could not comply with the contract. We had to go, we went back because I never wanted you to leave, but we went back. And unfortunately, at that point, you got an increase. And that was probably what we had coming as a city. But you agreed to come back. So there was a an adjustment at some point. And the other thing is, when you compare Pueblo to Boulder, I was looking at the number of people they have on that staff. They must stand around a lot waiting for something because their budget is double, double what it what Pueblo's budget is. And I don't think it's fair to compare us with Boulder. The other thing is that the Consumer Price Index in Colorado is point eight two in Pueblo. That means that if you work for HSPPR, it's much cheaper to live in Pueblo. So there's some factors there. Obviously, you have very compelling data that you are you know, doing a lot more with less when you compare us to all these other cities. But I just wanted you to think about that as you negotiate because I don't want to see you leave. But I I I'm concerned as to looking at this data, where you guys are headed. Because I, you know, there's a, you know, there's an element of how much we can afford to. And I know that you're have always considered that, but there's some other, you know, but the the Boulder thing caught me off guard because I don't think you can compare us at all with them. And I don't know whether Colorado University is included in that, whether or not they 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 control Colorado University and that those numbers are not in those numbers. It just seems weird, doesn't it, that they they have that many employees and see half as many animals as you do. It just doesn't make sense.
They do quite a bit of behavior work. So many shelters across Colorado and beyond send them challenging animals because like us, we don't have enough behavior staff to work with the number of challenging animals that we get, mostly dogs that we're talking about. And they do quite a bit of behavior work and that does take time and and people. So that is one thing I can speak to to them. Other than that, I I not can't speak to their staffing numbers.
Well, thank you for the report. It was really eye opening.
Thank you. Oh, yes, we still do. They take cats and dogs from us. Yeah.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Graham?
I don't have my budget book with me, but I think what your increase.
I think three, close to, yeah.
Thank you. Councilwoman Graham, I think it's it's right at five hundred thousand increase for the combined. So the the we contract and then it's split with the county. And and I want to go back and thank Mr. Flores for his comments as well. Yeah, we are not trying to compare ourselves or price ourselves with with Boulder. We're not Boulder. We do have, you know, the two hundred dollars per animal is is we've been forced, much like other businesses and everyone else, inflation has hit, cost of living increased. The states decided that 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 we should bear some costs for for increased salaries, which is is great for everyone to to pay people better, but that raises the cost of everything. So, you know, when we look at what we're dealing, we're looking at a seventeen percent increase in our cost of doing business from last year just in our supplies and our personnel costs, setting everything else aside. The other thing is we we met with the the mayor and we talked and and he was questioning what the increase was due to. It really does come down to the contract and the services we're being asked to provide and what that costs us to be able to provide that. So when you look at some of those numbers and you see a thirty seven percent increase in the number of animals just since twenty eighteen, again, I went back to try to say what, you know, when this contract was renegotiated in twenty nineteen, it was a very good contract for the city, the county and for HSPPR. And to be sitting here today saying it's not making it, why? Well, we did not, nobody projected that we would see this increase in the number of animals. Every animal that comes into the shelter is a cost on us of about two hundred dollars. It is that passed on to the contract. This is why maybe we didn't do a good job of explaining it and if that I apologize. But this is really where Julie and her team are really taking a look and trying to understand what is happening. We we need to be seeing few, seeing fewer animals coming to the shelter because fewer animals coming to the shelter lowers our costs, lowers the contract costs, call volume, the number of of calls that we respond to. We know that each officer we employ can handle about twelve hundred calls per year. And when we see an increase of fourteen, fifteen hundred calls per year, that necessitates us having to hire another officer, put another person out there on the road. And most disturbing to us is that that means that more animals are suffering. Is we do not want to have to increase our staff. We don't want to see this call volume going up because animals are not benefiting from that. In fact, they're suffering or responding. So as an organization, we are really trying to look at what is happening, particularly in the realm of cats in this community. I've been told that there are just more cats in Pueblo than anywhere else. I don't believe that. Maybe that's true. Spay neuter is definitely something that needs to happen at a much higher volume than what we've done, been able to do in the past. That's why we're our Pet Wellness Center that we opened inside PetSmart. We are in the process of renovating some of that space in the back to turn it into a cat spay and neuter clinic. And we want to start out with getting cats spay and neuter ramped way up from where we're current capacity here in in Pueblo. So appreciate the questions. Did not prepare to speak to the budget, but that's, I I don't have the exact numbers. Sure, Dan does and they've been shared with you. As an organization, we're just looking at it going, our costs have gone up significantly. Why? Well, far more animals come into the shelter than have in the past, far more car call volume happening. And this thing called inflation that is hitting all of us.
Well, I'm I'm glad that you had the comparisons for the other cities because, you know, regardless where you where you're living, it's actually like an animal by animal intake. So it doesn't matter if, you know, they're we're living in a more expensive city or not. I mean, you see on the numbers, the employees you guys have, what your budget is, the square foot you have. And that's that's what we need to look at is actually the animals you're in taking and helping, not based on, you know, what are what are living wages here? That's, I don't think that that was the point in your presentation. I think it was the fact showing how many animals you're helping compared to other cities and their animals. And we see the significant increase of well.
And thank you for that. I guess one one last point on that, if there is a silver lining in all of that, it because of the increased numbers, the economies of scale kicked in. And even though we're dealing with a seventeen percent increase in our costs across the board, the two hundred dollars per animal is the same thing it was last year. So that did not go up, just just doesn't help.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Warner?
So can you can you tell if Boulder is receiving a lot more donations? I I would think that their budget would go up even just for their social workers for animals because that's just, I mean, it.
I have not looked at their.
I bet they get a lot of donations. I would assume they would get a lot of donations. I would check. Oh, and then the deceased animals, are people calling you to pick up squirrels and cats? And I mean, I think that's kind of ridiculous if you're getting.
She's shaking her head no.
Okay. Oh, okay, because I never call anybody for squirrels or cats, just so you know, it's not me.
Speaking of donations, now's a good time to plug the Whisker Ball.
Yes, it is.
Which is October twenty ninth and is a really great fundraiser for you guys. And speaking of calls, I actually took a ride along with the with one of your law enforcement officers. And talk about eye opening. I mean, it was the highest of highs and then the lowest of lows in one ride along. And it was maybe even harder at times than my ride along with PD. So in that, I learned a little bit that you guys didn't have premium pay while you or hazard pay rather during the pandemic, you all had face to face interactions with people at the doors all the time. And so if I, I mean, maybe that 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 would be something you you could apply for with ARPA reimbursement to have hazard pay for all of the officers who worked their tails off that whole time, who who did have that face to face interactions with a whole bunch of people who were out in the community and and followed up. So that would be my recommendation and I would be completely supportive of that.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll look into that.
And and you all should take a ride along with as well. It it was very eye opening. So just check it out.
Yes, we'd love to have you.
Other questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you so much, Humane Society. And if there's no other order of business, I am going to adjourn this meeting September twelve.